And I stand here, this is a concerned citizen. Three days ago, I attended the wonderful dinner and discussion that was sponsored by Conley Memorial Medical Center. It was a healthy and delicious meal. It was served. The guest speaker was Dr. Jacqueline Castillo, N.D. She is a graduate of Pope High School as well as University of Texas Health Science Center in San Antonio. She did her residency in Corpus Christi and is now board certified and founding pharmacist. She'll be working with the Health and Medicine Institute of Madison in Pope in Florisville. She shared a PowerPoint presentation to an audience of about 25 Wilson County residents. Her presentation was delivered beautifully and was very informative. Unfortunately, the content of the presentation left me and perhaps several others a bit panicked stricken. This was my very first close-up look at the actual medical provisions of the Affordable Care Act and how our doctors will be restricted in providing tests and medications to patients as these strict, clearly outlined, specific formulas where exactly how much medical care a citizen receives or needs is predetermined by the governing boards. Truly, it felt like I was suddenly a character in the George Orwell book in 1984. I don't know how many of you are familiar with that, maybe in high school if you hadn't read that. I did. Last February one. And he was listening to it, it seemed incomprehensible, stripping of my personal rights and freedom to control my personal medical choices, especially as I realized that as a patient grows older and older, their services seem to become smaller and smaller. Again, messenger, Dr. Castillo did a beautiful job. She was simply explaining the outline of services and the most likely methods and procedures that are currently being taught to our healthcare providers on how a woman care will be implemented. The words proletarian, big brother, thought crimes, Ministry of Truth, and historical revisionism came to mind. The Affordable Care Act seems to be meeting all the criteria of what I was taught is simply called socialized medicine. My request to Commissioner's Court today is that Wilson County will draft and sign a resolution to affirm and declare its position, whatever its position is, on this government entitlement program. After speaking with many local residents, doctors, and other healthcare professionals, I have yet to meet a single individual who can tell me that he or she is truly in agreement that this unaffordable healthcare act. I understand that in compliance with the Open Meetings Act as well as Robert's Rules of Order, that is not appropriate nor is it expected that you respond to this request and I respect that. My hope is that you would simply consider my request and make a way to act on it quickly. I hope you've read the editorial in last week's Wilson County News by Fred Hornestart. It's a class even mine. It appeared on the editorial page. It's about anchors and leakers. It may inspire you. In closing, one of my favorite subjects in school was history. I love the stories of the American Revolution, especially of Paul Revere's Midnight Ride and his cry of warning. Do y'all remember it? What did Paul Revere say?
No.
It seems modern-day patriots have been warning the socialists are coming. Fortunately, it's apparent perhaps they're already here. And right on their heels, enclosing in fast, are the communists eager and ready to control our country. My prayer is that each of us in this room, and especially those of us who are elected officials, would simply have courage to stand and proclaim, as Patrick Henry did, "Give me liberty or give me death." Thank you for your time.
Item four, public hearing, courthouse, annex 123, update, comment, question. We don't let them get you an email from Don and the court for the work that you put in on there. The, uh, she did that and I asked for the, I'll shoot it on the website until after we back today, any of you. It's all information on it. They didn't have anything to change or to add to or take away from this.
The quick perusal did not enough to say yes or no in that sense. Well, but I can leave that before I leave today.
There was just a couple of things that I was going to talk to Donna about, but that's okay.
Well, we need to get them in and so we can...
Basically, she was just saying the county courts office is still in the annex and we still have more offices in the annex.
Yeah.
The treasury room and the extension office.
And we can add that.
Yeah.
And that's what I'm saying, if we can leave this meeting with some additions.
And then the other thing was when you were talking about the courthouse renovation, the old courthouse renovation, she's out the Wilson County courthouse interior renovation in 1915. That does choose and part of it, but isn't it here in the...
Oh, okay. Would you make on that sheet and give it to her and all y'all agree with the changes there? That's the main thing I want to come out of the meeting is something that we can put on the real website because it's time to... I left the meeting here the other night and went to a meeting and walked in and...
I've got a couple of questions also on those invoices that we're still getting from, from Thorn and I don't know who the other one connected. Why is it so much? Why are we still getting bills if all that is supposed to be on the standstill for right now? We've got a bill for $13,000 for a bidding process on the Justice Center and my understanding is on that Justice Center, they told me that there was one guy that came out of, a construction guy, that that bid was way over the bidding process of what they recommended, what was a $3.8 million, and that bidding process came up to $5 million. I mean, where, where is all this coming from and how come we haven't been notified about I mean, I got 10 invoices here that it's a total of $45,000 that I don't know, I think we're gonna have to put a stop to it because it's a lot of money that we're throwing in there right now that until we figure out what we're gonna do that bond, if that bond passes.
Well, Vernon and I visited today and we called him and told him that on the front of Justice Facility and this facility, the library facility, that any invoices had needed to be in by the end of this month because we didn't budget for it in the next election. So, they will be coming to an end, they are at an end, in other words, whatever's coming out now will be in September. And he told us the only thing he had left was some library drawings that he would get in before the end of the month.
So, what are we at with that money wise on, on what we have budgeted for this year? Not, we didn't budget nothing.
We didn't budget anything for $13,000.
So, we still have money for...
We have about $120,000.
How about we budget it?
Yes, sir.
Does he know if he's coming any closer than he saw that number? Good numbers? He said they stated that, name of the company on, again, what's that name?
Kohler.
Kohler. They've got all of the facts and everything to the envelope of the courthouse and they should be getting something very shortly from there. But they, he's got, he's got all the schematics to them and they're working on it and we should have that pretty well scheduled. Anything else? I thought I had, I think this one did choose. Yeah. And is everything on the back of the trapeze look okay or did you get the changes?
Yes, yes. The same, same corrections.
Yeah.
Basically same.
Well, yeah, she can just make those changes and go ahead and post it on the website. Mr. Lawrence, you had something?
Yes, sir. I'm here this morning to comment on this, the annex and the construction of, redeveloped for the courthouse and doing this project that we have that Judge just mentioned about the information. There will be flyers that say Wilson County, Texas, past, present, and future, and then there'll be a larger publication that you can get for information on what this is going to impact our county and our city and our area on what we're doing or trying to do with renovating the courthouse, moving the library, and making room for an archives and Justice Center. One of the things that has been talked about is that there's not enough information that we can talk with people about what the points are, what the procedure is going to entail, and what is how we're going to accomplish, what we're going to do. So, what we need to really do is get the information out. I'm the president of Wilson County Historical Society. The judge did come to our meeting last week since he's a member, but he had been in another meeting. He came and was talking to about this. I asked him about talking points. He has provided that. I think y'all will just agree that it will be on the website. This is something that we really need to be talking about. Some people think that elections don't impact us individually in the city or in the county, but this election coming up in November, which is a month away, is going to impact us greatly when it comes to our courthouse, our libraries, and our archives and our justice system. Right now, we need space greatly. We have done a tremendous job in Wilson County since the sesquicentennial, which we thank the Commissioner's Court for giving us that opportunity. Our history and our archives is busting at the seams because we have been receiving so much that we need in order to correct the history that has been put out about Wilson County to date. Most of it has been lore. We are very rich in history. We are very rich in how we have impacted the history of Texas, being where we are situated, on the San Antonio River, the Independence Trail, and right here in Wilson County. It also, Seguin was, lived here, he was very instrumental in all that happened during that time. And we have families that are direct descendants of all of these people who make this part of Texas what it is. And we need to collect and we need to correct and we need to preserve that history. And until we have the facilities to store or to work in, it's going to be very difficult to continue the task that we've begun. Right now, we really need that if your church or your organization has an opportunity to speak about the talking points, about what this will do, I encourage you, please, to check the website or if you want to, call me. I'll be glad to come and talk to your clubs or your organizations and say what we can do. I'm gonna put it in our church newsletter that there is an election coming up. We're not telling people how to vote, we're just telling people to please think about what you're voting about, think about what it's going to do, and think about what we need in order to go forward in this county. We have an opportunity right now with all the growth that we've got going on, with all the, like Mr. Burnside said, with what the hospital is doing, our Justice Center where we have court out here at the sheriff's office, that, that's just like a circus circus. I just came through that myself, not, not too long ago. That's a very unpleasant experience. So, we really need to expand what we have, to do what we've got and do it better. Our library has done a tremendous job in this county. I don't know if you're aware of Nikki Store and what the library has done for Wilson County. We have one of the most innovative and great, the statewide used library with the first kiosk in the state of Texas in Laverne, which most people don't even know about. So, we need to start educating ourselves, we need to start passing that information out. And all of you belong to clubs and organizations, you have neighbors, so talk to them. And we would encourage the commissioners to get their employees to just get the information out so people can make a good decision on what needs to be done and then for heaven's sakes, get out and vote. That's, the apathy is killing us and that's just what she would say is, the hospital can't fix that. But anyway, we do need to get the information out. Like I said, it's available. All you have to do is access it and use it.
Now, any of you have clubs or organizations, I know it's hard to think it. LaWanna will come out of her shell and talk, but she did.
I'm working on that, Margaret. I'm really working on that. Thank you.
Well, unfortunately, I get a copy of that.
It'd be available in the...
It'd be on the website.
The website.
We'll get you. Item five, Frank Fries, Laverne Insurance, property casualty, and workers' comp, new rates and information on new policies.
My son Craig was handling that spreadsheet.
He's too good looking to do this.
That's smart. You'll see two columns, premiums, column on the left is your acquiring premium, column on the right is your renewal premium. It shows building, content, your eligibility, public vehicles, and law enforcement. You're gonna see some spikes in here, not rate, not tremendous large increases. Property rates are firming up throughout the whole state of Texas. We're really seeing a tremendous increase. I have delivered 10, 15, 20% increases to schools and property. The rates have tightened up because the reinsurers are asking for more money. Our law enforcement went up a little bit. We had a six-year retro on our policy, which is a normal retro, meaning we'll pick up all claims six years old or newer. We did have something come in that occurred in '04, '05. Is that correct? Wasn't it '04, 2004, 2005 here?
I think that's right.
Anyway, we did get the carriers to move that retro back to 92, 2002 to pick up that front. We think that claim's gonna generate $30,000 to $50,000 roughly. Normally, and I was very fortunate to have a relationship, our agency has a good relationship with the company, they did back that up and helped us tremendously because it would've been difficult to even figure out how to answer a claim in New York. But it did turn out okay. And in that law enforcement, it doesn't reflect that law pressure. So, I want to share that with y'all there and ready for any questions pertaining to property and property hazard.
This is more due to the inflation area, I mean, the value of the property's going up instead?
Right, exactly. And the reinsurance is tightening up on all lines. Capacity is tightening up and going to start reflecting. We pay less than $2 a person in the county for our insurance on our, tremendous. I've had some counties pay $5. We're very blessed, the county's been good. The county's been very good. One of the many factors that happens.
And we have a question. It was about the bill over $8,000 total?
Yes, sir. Exactly. I like to do this with y'all so y'all are fully aware of where we're going. And I do not look for any massive changes in the industry. If we do have something come up with a severe change, you'll see it in June and then make a decision of that topic.
Yeah, if we can be alert ahead of time if budgeting process goes on, you know, and so we make the...
Well, we have visited quite a bit.
Okay.
We've worked very closely there and went through all of explaining what's happening there. On the workers' comp, I didn't bring that handout. Oh, yeah, I did bring the actual renewal. That premium moved from $83,000 to $87,000. It has two factors in it. It's running at $83,000 off, I'm joining the renewal premium at $87,000. And what you're seeing there is a worksheet on the, far bottom, the experience modifier is at .95. That number moved from a .82. That happened due to a very good year coming off our loss ratios, our loss experience, to a medium year coming on. Our payrolls went up. And if you look close on our fund factor, it moved from, it did the adjustment for that amount, it went to a .62 from a .74. So, we reduced our fund factor by 12% to offset that. The only increase you see here is a payroll increase. And we're still holding flat even though our experience modifier moved, our carrier made the adjustment in the fund factor with their underwriting adjustments. So, we're actually close to flat to what we were last year on rates.
Questions, comments?
Thank you all.
Okay, Sheriff. Any questions?
Okay, item six, recommendation and request for court action on filling the county extension agent family and consumer science position in Wilson County.
Before we get to that, I did want to introduce to y'all our new district, district extension agent, Ms. Kathleen Greer, administrator, my bad. Ms. Kathleen Greer. She got to start with us last week. She's actually from Comal County. She was the health agent there for a while, so she's local and we're very excited to have her, so.
Well, I want to thank y'all for allowing me. I appear to introduce and to recommend a new FCS agent for Texas A&amp;M of the Life Extension Service. Her name is Michelle Greer. She is going to be recommended for the position of county extension agent for family and consumer sciences. She's a graduate of Torleton State University with a bachelor's degree in family and consumer sciences. She completed an internship in Ebrath County where she worked with many programs such as the 4H Leadership Lab, Better Living for Texans, Walk Across Texas, Step Up and Scale Down, and Dinner Tonight. Michelle was also very active with the Extinction Educator Association Clubs. She's also involved with many community organizations. She's a Torleton E. Quinn Assistant Therapy Volunteer and she's done that since 2012. She's a fine youth philanthropy involvement with Children's Miracle Network beginning in 2009. She still works with that. And Michelle has worked with Children's Cancer Fund since 2005. I believe Michelle would be asset to extension as well as to Wilson County. And if you accept the recommendation, she will begin on October the 1st. This is Michelle Greer.
I want to question out, if she takes the position up, she won't be bringing, being involved in this oil field situation, anything around here.
Not unless they need some education.
No, I mean, we...
You don't want her out there drilling.
No, I think, I think her fiance is in the oil field, that's in this area.
Yes.
Very impressed that they came by and visited here and walked back. Very, very impressed. Anyone have any questions, comments?
And I'm always working with the Commissioner's Court.
Well, now, will you be out of your valley now or...
Yes, sir.
That's quite a change from Mael County, isn't it?
A little bit. But you know what, change is always good.
Oh, yeah. Most of us make it out there once a year to that little conference that held there.
The Texas Statuage Society Conference. Been there many times.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion? Five, item seven, Jan Harrell, County Treasurer, discuss and take action on closing cross bank account for business. Would paper that in?
Yeah.
Again. Item eight, Jennifer Fernandez, Guadalupe County Family Violence Shelter Proclamation, recognize in October 2013 as National Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Wilson County.
Good morning.
Would you like to read it in the register?
Whereas the crime of domestic violence violates an individual's privacy, dignity, security, and humanity due to systematic use of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and economic control and/or abuse, including abuse to children and the elderly. Whereas the problems of domestic violence are not confined to any group or groups of people that cut across all economic, racial, and societal barriers and are supported by societal indifference. And whereas the impact of domestic violence is wide-ranging, directly affecting individuals and society as a whole here in this community throughout the United States and the world. And whereas women are not the only target, young children and the elderly also are victims, and sadly, emotional scars are often permanent. Domestic violence caused United States companies at least $3.5 billion in lost work time, increased healthcare costs, higher turnover, lower productivity. And whereas it is gathered women themselves who have been at the forefront of efforts to bring peace and equality to the home. Now, therefore, we do hereby proclaim the month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month and call all citizens, community agencies, religious organizations, medical facilities, and businesses to increase their participation or effort to prevent domestic violence, thereby strengthening the communities in which we live.
Motion, Commissioner Lyley, Commissioner Morales, all three. For those of you in courtroom that don't know, Ms. Jennifer used to work as deputy for the sheriff and worked with our family violence here in the county along with Ms. Dana Falwell when she was the assistant county attorney. And that's been several years now.
Yes, it has.
And since she's, she's been working over in the Guadalupe County area. So, we're very fortunate to have her work in, in and around our county. We appreciate her.
She's two, two federations.
of Operations. Letter dated September 18, 2013, Judge Quinney. Dear Judge Quinney, attached is a copy of contract between Wilson County, Don Wallace, and Diane J. Hartman, dated 10/1/1993. Because of this contract, Mr. Wallace and I are requesting that court to continue our contract until 12/31/2013. This is when the current plan year ends. Over the years, we have been the only agents consistently bringing proposals for health insurance carriers who would underwrite counties. The county has benefited from our efforts over the years with reasonable rates. The county had a no-rate increase for the planned year January 1, 2013 to January 31, 2013. In addition, in 2013, the county received a M.E.R. check from Humana for the amount of $17,650 thus lowering the overall premium for the planned period. It is the only good business for, it is only good business for the county to continue to pay us for the planned year 2013 because of our efforts to get you a no-rate increase. Do you not, do you pay a roofer for half a roof job even if the job, he completed the whole roof? We are only asking to be paid for the whole job. We are only asking to be paid for the full planned year because the county is enjoying the benefits from our efforts until the planned year ends. We are enclosing an agent a record letter to reinstate Don Wallace, Diane J. Hartman as agents to receive commissions from 12/31/2013. We would appreciate a prompt answer to the request no later than September 26, 2013. Our email address is there. And thank you for your prompt attention to this matter, Don Wallace and Diane Hartman. Is there a motion to reinstate for the continuing for the... Can we, yes, can we comment on your letter?
All of the guys have received notes from Humana, which is us, this morning. A regarding request for change of agent of rhetoric by the county effective October 1st. This is a letter of notification sent from Humana to us. The current agents of record have closed. This notification gives the current agent of record a supplement of crime to go back to the client, in this case, the county, to address the change of agent record they have received. Because of information that is on letter, our letter... Because of information that is on letter, our letter to the judge is requesting the court reconsider the previous actions. Let us continue to do the county's agencies with getting a producer out of Houston. We have largely completed our contract ending December 31st. On October the 1st, the producer from Houston, contracting as an agent producer for Humana. As part of this change, the producer will be increasing our compensation from Humana to December 31st. Don and I request that county to send the October 1st letter to let the county entertain negotiations with Don and I to reduce his compensation and in consideration for the county until December 31st. It is our understanding on January 1st, 2014, the agent producer from Houston will then be hired by the county as a consultant and the set annual compensation for Humana or any other insurance company will cease. The annual bid process and recommendations for health insurance for the county will then be under the supervision of Agent Producer Consultant from Houston.
Thank you. Judge, um, this, this whole process is still a little irritating to me how it went on. Not that that matters, just to me. I don't know legally, personally, where we stand on this. It seems, it, it seems to make sense that these folks would be paid for their work through the end of the year. But because of how the process took place, I don't legally know where the new folks came in, where, where they began, where it ends. And so, um, I don't want to make a motion that probably wouldn't get a second anyway for something that I'm not sure the legal idea is. As I, as I look at it from the standpoint, I, I don't know if we can back off from this guy, from this company.
Well, I would, I would.
It seems to me that they should be paid for it. But.
Well, what, kind of like what she was saying is, they were contracted with for this year. They did the work for this year. In my opinion, they deserve the income for this year.
I, I agree. The, the question is, is are we now legally?
We hired them for, we hired them for starting next year was my, and then this other came up as to, well, you will be paying us for the rest of this. Now, I, I don't know where that comes from or how that happens, you know?
I don't know the answer to that either.
Can we table this issue and give research to the legality of it? Or is there any, is there any opportunity from some of the other commissioners here to pay these people for this year's work that they, they did, you know?
I mean, I mean, thank you, Judge. We don't pay Hartman, Humana pays Hartman.
Right, but we, they pay them based on the contract with us that they, 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 they did, you know? That's right.
That would be up to Humana, not us. But we, we hired Humana, the way I understand.
No, you hired us. He can read that letter that gives us the agent a record letter.
But that was back in 93 in county law. You don't have the authorization to hire anybody.
It's never been rescinded since 2003.
But I guess, I guess.
I get the legal question, I get it.
I guess the thing about it is, what, what they're asking for is compensation for the rest of this year. They was performing a service for us that we agreed to. Now, in my personal business or in, as far as what I, what effect I can in county business, I stand clear, I stand by my word when I do something. And that's all I think they're asking at this point in time, that we stand by the word as a county that we, we gave them when we made contact with them for this year. Now, whether it comes from Humana or the county, it comes from the county's actions that we took at court. And that.
Is that the, is that the $17,650, is that the?
No, that's what they say.
That was a rebate check.
Okay. Yeah, pull it down at this.
That's, we, we received that from.
What kind of dollars, what kind of money are we talking about?
Just our normal commission we've been receiving.
And what would that, what, what was the start and stop on, uh, did it, September 1st was the date that was printed?
On?
That, that the other company was asking that they receive the commission for the remainder of the year?
Then the court voted.
October 1st?
October 1st.
So it's three months basically we're talking about?
Right. Well, it would be, in my opinion, it would be like you, the commissioners, that the county asked you to work till the end of the year without being paid. And that's what, basically what you're doing to us. You're not paying us for the work that we did to get you a no rate increase for the whole year.
So we're looking at $10,000, $12,000? What kind of number do you think we're looking at? As a total? Seventy-five hundred total?
Well, at, at this point, if you don't reinstate us, the guy in Houston is going to get the money. So it's not like we're asking for something that you're not already budgeted and going to pay. So.
And, and, and as a court, they've already been hired for the next year. So, so that's an understanding that it's not a matter of, that the agent of record will get more credibility or whatever. They've been hired for the next year. So I mean, it's, uh, it's just a matter of what, in my opinion, is right, you know?
And I, I agree from the standpoint of what's right. I don't know from the standpoint of what we can do.
It's, it's only ethical and professional that we get paid for the work that we did.
Oh.
And you can change agents twice a month if you want to, you know? So to ask if it's legal, it's legal. I'm not an attorney, but I guarantee it's legal.
Let me, let me hold the court. If, if there's any op, if we have any leeway to come back at the next meeting and designate them for the remainder of the year, then Dana can research before we can take a vote. I mean, there's nothing to take a vote if we can't legally do it.
If, if there's no, um, if there's nothing illegal about it, I will make a motion that, um, these folks be compensated for the fourth quarter of this calendar year.
Dana, can, can, can we go ahead and make the vote and then hand in your research to see if we can legally act on it?
You can, I mean, as far as to take a vote today and then need research. It, it would essentially, the court voted to appoint the new agent, so they would have to rescind their previous appointment.
Well, no.
And negotiate, um.
Are we voting to rescind them? Is that what we said?
Well, they've already been appointed as the new agent of records.
But, but if.
You would, they would have to vote to rescind that appointment, to change it to the first, and then reappoint Hartman.
Judge, if I may speak, the agent, uh, the letter from Humana gave us until September the 24th to rescind, I mean, you can rescind the letter anytime you want.
Right.
But as the Nolan void, the other package.
All you'd be doing would be giving us an agent of record letter for October, November, and December. Wouldn't be voiding his contract effective January 1. Had nothing to do with his contract January 1.
Yes, essentially, his contract was effective the date that the court voted to approve it. I mean, approved him as the, the agent, but.
From, from my perspective, the court made a choice to make a change. And I stand by that change. I think whatever we can do to make it a clean break, that we ought to do. But we also have to make certain that whatever we do, that we don't somehow jeopardize the new folks of those who put together the package that they put together for us for the new year. And I'm, I'm kind of concerned about that because that's something that's going to need to happen.
Well, they have a contract, uh, will have a contract for the, for the year itself. And they all put those packages together prior to their actual work.
It, it, and for me, if we can make it work to where these folks are compensated for what they did and we do not hinder our ability through this new company to put together what we need to do for the court, then I'm in favor of that. If we can't make that work and if we feel like we need to compensate these folks for what they did and not make a change just because we feel that we make an obligation to them.
Well, at the time the court voted, at the time the court voted on that, there was nothing on the table about the following year. That came up in a letter to the court or afterwards.
Well, to, to me, that was part of the problem is that how it was done is that I'm not sure, maybe other than, than Commissioner Five, if everyone sitting at the table understood all the aspects of what was about to happen when we did it.
Like I said, there's, there is no reference in court, in the courthouse, taken back, went back many years, that where the county had ever hired Hartman. No, nowhere the court ever approved him for, uh, agent of the record. It was signed by the county auditor, which the county auditor, and this fellow, correct me if I'm wrong, the court has to approve. A judge has to sign the contract or a court committee.
Because horizontal concern, all that means nothing except the fact that this year, this year, they brought plans before us and we agreed to. That's all I'm saying.
Correct, and we, we had a contract with Humana. We had a contract with them too.
They was the representatives that, that went and brought the bids. They, they went to other companies besides Humana, which none of them took, put a bid in for us. They did that. They brought that bid from Humana to us. They brought the people from Humana to us. They did their job as agents. That's what they're saying and that's what I agree with.
Again, I'd just say, we, we, nowhere to show that, that we were, that we were hired by the county.
You don't, you don't recall that we helped court and we went over and just bid and we?
We accepted Humana, did.
And who brought it to you?
Yes, y'all brought it to us.
Okay, then, then we were the agents at that time and it brought it to you.
Very true. But again, there's no document that says that we were, y'all were hired by the county. Yes, there isn't. Well, I can't find it. Well, there is. I mean, nowhere can I find it.
From 1993 to forward, um, whether we agree that these folks did a good job or didn't do a good job, I wasn't a commissioner for a long, none of us were commissioners back in 93. They have come forward and put together the proposals which we have accepted. And we've looked at the rates that have changed and, and grumbles about that. My opinion is through that time, if we're going to make a change, then we ought to, if we didn't fire them for, if that's the right term, we didn't fire them for incompetency. We hired a new group because we felt that the new group might be able to give us better rates somehow through their network since they're a larger group.
You know, you keep saying we.
Well, I'm saying, well, we, the court.
The, the court voted, three, and, and I said, I, I would have no information prior to this. I asked for it to be tabled so everyone could come in and, and make, make a presentation, local or otherwise.
But no, nor did I, but I say we because once it's done.
Once it's done, but I do want, I do want people to understand where I stand on, as a, as an individual. I, I'm, I'm not, uh, the vote went that way, it carried. I understand that. But that does not, does not, as me as an individual, change what I think.
I understand. And from the standpoint of the vote, I, I do not disagree with the change. I just have disagreed with the process that led to the change.
And that's what, I'm never, I'm never projecting anybody from, from whatever. I'm just saying everyone should have an opportunity to make a presentation.
For me to vote on something that has that kind of impact on the county and not have the full information, I refuse to do that. So I don't know where we're going to get, in my opinion, after that amount of time. If $7,500 is what it is that the county needs to do to make this a clean break, then.
And as she said, it's.
Then, then I, I personally, I'm in favor of that.
But what I'm saying is, she's, she's saying it won't be the county's $7,500. It's just the, it's the commission that Humana will be paying to someone.
Yes, sir, but that goes back again to the issue of, of what this other company, whose name I still don't know, I mean, it's available, I just don't know what it is. What this other company, how they're going to respond to that if we make them the agent of record from the standpoint of the work that is yet to be done for putting together our plan for next year.
And this, and I don't know. I think we can be assured that they will stand with, and if they're not, there's plenty of people out there that's standing in line waiting to get their, their presentation heard. So if we can't let them hold us hostage, I mean, I don't, if they.
Part of the process that should have taken place before, we were known on all different aspects of this.
I think the ethical thing to do is to pay for the work we do. If you want to be ethical, we need to pay for what we did.
Judge, is the $7,500 coming from the county?
No, it comes from Humana. It's the, it is the, uh, commission as agents that they get paid for, for signing on different entities. They signed us on, so Humana pays them a commission. And they signed us on for the year.
It could come from the county if, if we're not able to change or not willing to change the short-term agreement we have with this other company. And, and if they see that part of this new thing that they got was the, the fourth quarter contribution or payment that could be made to these folks, then if we are going to pay it, then it, then it would have to come to the county. Unless it's just.
I don't know, we'll find out.
I guess we go back to the, to the company. I don't know, I guess legally we go back and figure out what we do, what we can do. I, I don't know who, I don't know who the county representative is that deals directly with the insurance company.
It's already built into your, your rates, so it's not like it's going to cost you any more money.
And we certainly don't want a county to pay a burden beyond, that would not be legal.
Excuse me, Judge.
Paul, can you check with that company and see if they will remain as agents and relinquish that commission for the remainder of the year?
Paul, I'll find out. The, the way it has to be done is, has to rescind our vote because we're hired yet. That's what's being paid.
But we already had employees for the end, until the end of this year.
Judge?
Good.
The gentleman had something to say.
I'm kind of just putting my, my two cents in here. But the new insurance company you hired would be for the beginning of the year, correct? That would be their year contract, as of January 1? Is that right?
It came in October 1.
But, but their starting date would have been at the beginning of the year, of the new year because you had this insurance company through December 31st.
Really true, we're out of order now. I mean, you're not on the agenda to, to speak on this, so, uh, I'm sorry, I just.
That's fine.
I guess the issue, the question would be, Paul, if, if you could contact them and tell them the dilemma that, that we have. I don't know if we have to rescind the vote or if we have to, to change, change the, so that the effect. I don't know if we have to rescind the vote or if we have to, to, to change, change the, so that the effective date is January the first, but if we make the effective date January the first, then I go back. I guess it's not like I'm talking out of both sides of my mouth, but then we have to go back and ask ourselves what happens as far as the bidding process that needs to take place in early October, and so I don't know the numbers. It would seem to me that if they had the contract, it's of the day, be the agent of record, if that's the proper term, January the first, then perhaps the late work that they had to do in October could be regarded as a part of that. And I guess the other option that we would have is that, um, no.
Nearly all of these agents put bids together on their own, seeking to get the business of the entities. So if they're not willing to do it, there are lots of them that are.
I agree, and, and I think if we had some negotiation, that could have been part of it.
And I really feel like that if, if they're contacted and asked, it's just gonna jeopardize the bid action for next year, I think they'll pay you a very.
Well, and, and they, they might be able to, they might be willing to make a consolation in their, because I think we were paying them fifty thousand dollars a year or something like that to represent us. They might be willing to make a, a consolation and reduce that fee for the first year to offset and remain the agent of record to offset, you know, there, there's a lot of things that could be done. Whether they would be done or not, but to where the county, uh, paid these folks and they took a redact reduction in their rate, you know, I mean, they're gonna go forward.
They have a thing in Humana though, stating that, you know, that they can come to court, and Humana is the one that will be paying that, I mean, they'll be paying seventy-five hundred, not a.
Yeah, but, but the agent of record has to, has to be changed, and the issue is whether or not this new company is gonna relinquish that.
If the dates are disclarified, it would be the, that they, that the agent of record started January the first would be the proper way to handle it.
And there is a contract that states October the first, so, I mean, it would, it would require their agreement to renegotiate that contract to January the first.
And execute it.
And they're saying though, that they have a thing in Humana stating that.